...council meeting at six o'clock, and today is Monday, June 17th, and we just came out of closed session. So I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please take roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Here.
Councilmember Shalhoub?
Here.
Mayor Protem Holly?
Here.
And Mayor Ania?
Here. Mr. Gastineau, would you please lead it? And begin. My friends, allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, stands no nation, my God, indivisible, in the name of God, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you. Acknowledgements. First of all, Mr. Black is our city attorney. Do you have anything to report out of our closed session?
No final actions are taken in closed session, Mayor.
Thank you. Under acknowledgements this evening, we have none. Under the consent calendar, we have five items: approval of our minutes, warrant claims, our bi-weekly payroll, to consider the indirect city managers to sign the California Department of Corrections, Rehabilitation, Mutual Aid Agreement between Pelican Bay State Prison and Crescent City Volunteer Fire Department, and authorize city managers to sign an agreement with the Community Development Services for Economic Development over the counter underwriting services.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item four and five from the consent calendar, please.
Okay, we'll pull item four and five.
And I will move to approve items one through three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
I'd like to ask that the minutes be modified just a little bit on page four. It talks about my discuss -- part of my discussion regarding the bid, and it said he feels that at this time the bid is more decisive than not and needs cooperation to succeed. I think I said divisive. They're very different meanings, and I'd like that corrected.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Shalhoub?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Would you please take your roll? We'll take -- hold the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalhoub?
Yes.
Council -- excuse me, Mayor Protem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Ania.
Yes, we'll take up item number four.
Thank you. I just had some people asking me about mutual aid with Pelican Bay State Prison and what that means, and I know there were some concerns from citizens just because they saw them out, you know, working, which I think is a good thing, but I think that it was worth a little more information for the public tonight.
Mayor, I'd like to have Chief Wakefield address the questions and have a discussion on this. Thank you.
You have questions?
No, I just, you know, I think there were some concerns, and I thought, you know, we might as well talk about it a little bit so that, you know, I mean, you've read the letters to the editor in the past, and I've seen -- no, you haven't? Okay. Okay, well, there were concerns about Pelican Bay inmates actually going out to someone's private home and responding.
Well, first, the fire department at Pelican Bay is staffed with Level One inmates, so they aren't coming out of the shoe. They're people that are there for, you know, probably drunk driving or drugs or whatever, but they've earned the right to be there. That's the best job or position to have in the prison. They get a lot of time cut off their sentence if they're there, so they're very well behaved. And when they come, usually from Pelican Bay, we're gonna -- if we ask for them, we're gonna get engine with one fire captain and four inmates. The fire captains, who all four of them that work there currently are members of either the city or the district fire departments. And they're a tremendous resource in the fact that they're very physically fit and they're very, very well trained because they have nothing else to do all day but train. So when they come, we get a lot of work out of them, and they'll stay till the bitter end and do all the hose rolling and the cleaning up and whatever we want. So it's a pretty good relationship as far as them providing aid to us. The other side of mutual aid is us providing aid to them. That hasn't happened in the 24 years of the prison being here, but you never know it could.
And are our volunteers trained to respond to the prison?
Yes. We do have an agreement with them that we try and send the first engine there that way, staffed with correctional officers, because we have a lot of volunteers that are correctional officers, so they're aware of all the ins and outs of working with inmates in the prison and one thing another. If the fire gets to be too bad, then we'll probably be bringing in more people, and the prison themselves would have to deal with the security and issues that they might have. And really, out there, everything's sprinkled, everything's concrete and steel, with the exception of administration building and the, you know, another potential fire out there is a warehouse. Much of a fire inside the shoe or inside the housing units is pretty slim.
Right. And in what instance would the Pelican Bay inmates respond to a fire outside of the prison?
Well, they do.
Would they respond to all in the vicinity, or just if we?
Just if we ask.
Okay.
And they don't come to all of them, but we do ask for them quite a bit because they're a tremendous resource, and they'll, you know, especially if we were ever to have multiple incidents at the same time or just the bad day when we're shorthanded, which happens, you know.
And would they respond to medical?
That would be a rare event. They might respond to a major accident scene, possibly, but probably not medical.
Okay.
Unless we just, you know, we needed the manpower for some reason, like a real heavy lift assist or something like that, they might respond. Rare that they would ever go into somebody's house and treat somebody inside their home. That would be a -- it's never happened yet. I don't see that that probably would happen.
Great.
And they're very sensitive to those kinds of things, too. They understand the issue. They just, they just wanna help, and it means a lot to the inmates when they do get outside.
I think it's a great partnership. I just thought it'd be good to mention those things so people feel more comfortable with the agreement.
And they work in a crew, you know. Actually, all of our people generally do. When we go to a fire, there's three or four people with a captain or some leader, a senior person or whatever, and they work as a group. They don't work individually. So if, on a fire scene, those inmates are gonna be with their captain, and if the captain is going inside of burning buildings, say, so are the inmates. And when they come out, they come out, they stay together. So they're always supervised, you know. They aren't just willy-nilly around wherever the thing is, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Let's go to item number five, then, which is the authorization city manager for the over-the-counter.
Do you wanna take action on item four?
We can do them together.
We'll do them together, I think. Thanks, five.
Item number five, I just was happy to hear that this is moving forward and just was interested in what the timeline is.
Yeah, that's a real good question. The, we have until the end of December, you know, to put the over-the-counter application together. So we're hopefully moving real quick on this one, you know, to get all the information and bring that back before the council, probably sometime in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I move to approve items four and five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion to approve items four and five. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalhoub?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Ania.
Yes, thank you. Under presentations this evening, we have a presentation. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed. Public, okay. Public comment. Oh, does somebody have a public comment on the -- all right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Morrison from the county, and I've been perplexed about the seafood processing plant from the beginning. When, way back, I researched it when they needed the wastewater treatment upgraded, and I was under the impression it was for the city, but all of the comments I got from the, I read from the Water Regional Board, Quality Board, it was all about fish affluent from the seafood processing plant. And I don't, I have no idea what this is about, an over-the-counter underwriting services of the seafood processing plant project. Is there anyone that the citizens know what that's about? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Connie, I would just say that there are two separate projects. The seafood processing plant is a new project that would be built in the harbor that we're applying to assist with. I think what you're referring to is the old wastewater treatment plant that was in the harbor and the permitting issues it had, and we, we started taking their affluent from the harbor to the city's new plant. So they're two, they sound similar, but they're two different projects.
Thank you.
So would you like to --
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm assuming so.
I'm assuming it would. Let's move on to reports and presentations. We have a presentation of the Every Fifteen Minutes program.
Mayor, do you have Chief Black doing introductions on this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Chief? Good evening, Council. Every Fifteen Minutes is a program that is conducted every two years, and we've done so within the last six years consecutively. This program that was first introduced by the California Highway Patrol as a preventive approach to educate the youths of our community about the devastations of driving under the influence. This year, California Highway Patrol has spearheaded the Every Fifteen Minutes program at the high school. Therefore, what I would like to do is I would like to introduce to you the area commander of the California Highway Patrol, Lieutenant Mike Riddell.
Lieutenant?
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank the city council, the Delnard School District, allied agencies, and the citizens of Crescent City and Delnard County for the Every Fifteen Minute. Everybody did a spectacular job at assisting us to do a wonderful program. As Chief Black said, Every Fifteen Minutes is a very important way to relay a message to our younger drivers along with their parents and their friends. Our public information officer for the California Highway Patrol, Brandy Gonzalez, spearheaded, and I would like to have her discuss the presentation with you, and she did a spectacular job with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir Gonzalez?
Good evening. I'm just gonna start with sharing a little bit history of the Every Fifteen Minutes program. The first prevention and education program was actually developed by the Chico Police Department in 1995, and it was through a grant from ABC which they developed it from. The program's name was derived from the fact in the early 1990s, every fifteen minutes, someone in the United States was killed in a DUI-related accident. With the implementation of new laws and programs like MADS, SAD, and FNL, the death rate has raised to every thirty minutes, which is still an unacceptable number. In October of 2000, CHP assumed responsibility of the program, and the funding has been provided by grants from OTS. Sorry, a little nervous. The primary objective is proactive education, and the program is a two-day event focusing on high school juniors and seniors and encouraging them to think about drinking, driving, personal safety, and making mature decisions in how it affects family, friends, and those around them. The program also takes the opportunity to remind everyone that drinking and driving is not an accident. The term crash is much more appropriate when relating to an alcohol-related incident because accident implies that it is not unavoidable, but when in fact an alcohol-related incident is both predictable and preventable. As Chief Black stated, Crescent City Police Department had led the program for the last few years, and due to the loss of the school resource officer, they'd actually talked about eliminating the program this year. So I quickly went from committee member into lead officer, and because with the continuing support and interest from the local agencies such as Delnard Unified School District, Crescent City Fire Department, Crescent City Fire Protection District, Delnard Sheriff's Office and their explorers, Crescent City Police Department, Friday Night Live, Caltrans, The Rotary Club, Center Coast Hospital, Mercy Life, Delnard Ambulance, California Auto Image, Weir's Mortuary, the local US Army recruiting, OTS, BiCoastal Media, Delnard County, Melanie Berry, Holly Meyer Zolkovich, and Sylvia Ortega with Delnard County, as well as the Tripocat actually assisted in promoting this. And it was easy to realize how well, how we all understood the importance of the program and the need to continue the education to our young teens. Each one of these agencies and individuals dedicated their time and donated their resources to establish a great presentation which would impact the youth of our community. So I'd like to give an extra special thank to Dana Reno. He actually played a very big role in the sense that he was kind of a veteran to it, where I was a rookie in this whole process, had never done it before, not even as just an officer on the committee. And then also Sylvia Ortega, who did all of the filming and stayed up all night to make sure that this presentation was ready for the assembly the next day. So I know I would love to show you the end of the results and all the hard work and dedication. I believe we're gonna show you that video right now.
I don't know. You got anything going? You heard my argument, so. Jackson, you hear anything? Hey, that's a part of your name?
No.
Sure. Hey, let's take a shopping where we go. What's yours, Lance?
Let's go.
Okay, you ready to go?
Yeah.
How are you?
Um, I think it's gonna get more embarrassing there, so I'm.
Why should you wait that long? You sure you're good?
Yeah, yeah, it was fine.
All right. Oh, you sure?
Yeah, I mean, I got it.
All right.
That's not gonna be a problem.
Okay.
You guys trust me?
Yes.
We got this. We looking pretty far ahead. We looking pretty far ahead? Okay, okay, let's go. Okay, so what can I bring you to go with?
I don't care where you want.
I don't know, what do you think?
There was an announcement. Just put this announcement. It's really down, it's coming out right now.
What is it, Brian?
Over in high school, uh, one student on the side, and that's just another. That's another person.
How many times I walk?
Two, because they're the bottom two on side, and they don't really go.
Okay, they won't even walk, they'll walk right now.
Okay.
So, I know, sitting across the fire, Davey. So, I know, sitting across the fire, Davey. It was awesome, you know, and I'm not really a professional, but well, for a reason. Then we're fine, fine. Then we're fine. So, I think, I think.
When I woke up this morning, I had been through a day with using two of my friends and hot friends after seeing how hard the family is to be around and completely grateful that I have a lot of people alive, they're gonna be great in this. When I woke up this morning, I thought it was just gonna be my middle day, but I ended up going to two people, and with that, it was great consequences, and then I woke up and thought, maybe I'm gonna be better. If I could say one last thing to my family, they would be much. I love them, and I'm sorry for all the pain that I've brought to you guys, which I love you, and I wish I could see you again, and do my best for you, and I miss you, and I love you. When I woke up this night, I didn't know that this would happen to me or my parents. You always hear about it happening, speed on the news, but it's different when it actually happens to you, is through life, and your friends and family, that day. I think they will have stable people, friends who are in fact, you haven't told them that I love them, and, um, I'm sorry, but it happened, and I didn't tell them, and I just be careful, I mean, smart decisions, because it does happen, and it does, it may look like, I mean, it could be way worse, or someone sees very close to you.
When I woke up this morning, I had no clue that something devastating had happened, just like that. I didn't know that it was just as fast as, as I got in the car, uh, my life would be over, everything would be gone. Eighteen years of life, eighteen years of friendships, eighteen years of loving family, everything else gone, and, just a second, if I could say one last thing to my family, my friends, my loved ones, might say, thank you for everything you've done for me, for enduring the hard times and enjoying the fun times, for making me the person I am today, and for making me the person, hopefully, I'll be. I hate to leave you all, but I know that you will keep on, wish you keep on here in my, and enjoying everything that's gone. I love you all, and I'll miss you.
When I woke up this morning, I knew a lot, but I would never see my friends or my family again, and I'm like, if I could say one last thing to my family, whatever, it would be, uh, I love them, I love their day, maybe I get to the first time I'm around today, and I miss them.
Why did you cry like that, really?
Uh, maybe it's, I guess, maybe I shouldn't have, please, just try it. Everybody, I mean, I thought, there's three people that, uh, three, uh, three people off the line, um, the one that I was with, you were with, and I tried.
How did you react? You found that out?
Um, when, um, you, I mean, I suppose, you can.
Did you think anything was gonna happen when you left your little?
I, I, I drove to Atlanta, five, five days, we'd be on the big rail, school, office, and they, and they were just, um, excited about you, and after, and it was only a couple of days, I gave them, they called me, gave.
If you had a chance to speak to the family members, so please say so.
I don't know, um, she was sorry for what, what happened, and, 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 you know, and she, uh, uh, I'm very, very glad it happened, I, I feel, like, I feel, I feel, I'm probably a little bit angry, but, there's, there's, uh, there's, there's, I can't, I can't, I can't talk about it, but I keep, I keep, I have, there's, 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 I can't speak.
What do you see yourself doing, what's your?
I, I, uh, I, I was, uh, so, so, I'm a patient, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting, I have to get her, and she is, I have to get her, I have a lot of trouble, I have to, a lot of things, and I, my daughters, you know, I'm, 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 I'm , I'm, 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 I'm,
You have really one more thing?
What do you have? I forgot what you, oh, I'm, 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 I'm,
What's your last, and you were giving students?
Two, that, two words, maybe three words, like, I will choose, I always thought I would make trouble with a child, if that means worth it, maybe, I think, it was, maybe, I'm not.
Thank you, Brandy. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
Thank you. Any council comments?
Well, all I can say is, every year, when I watch this, it brings me to tears and have a big lump in my throat, because I'm a mom of a high school student, um, and I just want to thank you for stepping up to the plate, even though it was outside your comfort zone, you did a great job, and it's such a valuable lesson and experience for the kids at the school, so, um, I hope that the, uh, program will continue.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say that, um, I mentioned this once before, but I was a pallbearer twice before I got to high school, and, uh, so that's really hard to watch.
Any other comments to the council?
Well, thank you, thank you once again. We're gonna move on in, with our meeting, and, um, I'll open it once again to, uh, public comment, if anyone has anything they'd like to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, and comments of public interest on matters appearing on the agenda are also accepted, and the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items, and we can refer those to staff if appropriate. So, any comments, excuse me, any comments that are not made at the microphone are out of order and won't be part of the public record, and please, when you come up, state your name, and if you're a city or county resident, for the record, and public comment is limited, limited to three minutes, is there any other public comment? Yes?
I'm Connie Morrison, I'm from the county, and, um, that was an excellent film, and it's a shame to lose somebody every fifteen minutes, every thirty minutes, at any time, if it's not necessary. And there's something going on, I think, in this county, um, and city, with the cancer, and I know a long time ago, there was a lot of industrial chemicals used, and probably through ignorance or improper training, not enough toxic waste dumps, uh, or approved places to put them, somehow, these chemicals got into our environment, and without trying to place guilt or blame or anything, there are still people dying, one person every week dies in Delmar County from cancer, and a hundred and fifty new cases are diagnosed every month. The city has put out a hazardous materials disclosure list, and I don't know if you know this, kind of, it says, um, basic information on the location type, and the health risks of hazardous materials used, stored, or disposed of in the city is not now available for firefighters, health officials, planners, elected officials, and residents, and that "not" stuck in there totally negates this whole forum, would you like to see it or have it?
We can give it to our clerk, yes.
Perhaps you can review it and maybe rethink it, and provide the community with what you know about the hazardous wastes that perhaps were emitted a long time ago, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, we're gonna move on to item number seven, and that's gonna be, we're gonna adjourn to our housing authority, and then we'll reconvene as a council, so we'll adjourn now to our housing authority, and would you please, I'll call that to order, would you please take the roll?
Yes, sir. Board member Gastonow?
Here.
Board member Shalong?
Here.
Vice chairman Holly?
Here.
And chairman Ania.
I'm here, thank you, under communications, is there any public comment on our Crescent City Housing Authority? Seeing none, we'll go to item number one and two, which is the consent calendar, move for motion for approval?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for our consent calendar, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Board member Gastonow?
Yes.
Board member Shalong?
Yes.
Vice chair Holly?
Yes.
And chairman Ania.
Yes. Next is our housing directors' report, and we have none, okay? Public hearings, we have none, continuing business, we have none, and new business, we have none, so our, we'll adjourn to our next regu- regular scheduled meeting for July fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, at six P M.
I'd like to wish Megan the best, uh, on the delivery of her baby coming up soon, just in case you don't make it to our next meeting. Okay, well, good luck.
Good luck, thank you. We'll adjourn from the, uh, housing authority, and we will go into, we'll adjourn to the Crescent City Successor Agency to the redevelopment agency, would you, and I'll call that to order, would you take roll?
Yes, sir. Board member Gastonow?
Here.
Board member Shalong?
Here.
Vice chair Holly?
Here.
And chairman Ania.
Here. Our consent calendar has two items, our regular minute, meeting minutes, and the warrant claim, is there a motion for approval?
No, don't prove.
Second.
Moved in seconded, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Board member Shalong?
Here.
Board member Gastonow?
Yes.
Vice chair Holly?
Yes.
And chairman Ania.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Executive report, there is none, the executive director's report, business items, there are none, public hearing, there's none scheduled, new business, there's none scheduled, and when any of the, um, success or agency redevelopment items, members have anything to say about that? Did you have any comments, Mr. Plazza? Okay, no, then we will adjourn this meeting until July fifteenth at six P M, and now we will go back to our regular city council meeting, and we have item number nine, which is continuing business, by the way, we have no public hearings tonight, continuing business is considered and waived full rule reading, read by title only, introduced ordinance seven seven five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Crescent City, amending chapter five point one hundred of the Crescent City Municipal Code relating to assessment amounts. Mr. Plazza?
Yeah, mayor members of the council, good evening, that, and before you, was discussed the last two council meetings, we received direction, uh, at the last council meeting to make some changes to the ordinance, uh, staff has completed those changes, they're attached, uh, they're significant changes, so it would require to have the first reading again, uh, if you're good with these changes, we'll schedule the second reading, uh, for July first meeting.
Is there any council comments on this first reading of this, uh, amended resolution? Any public comment on this, uh, amended resolution? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the council for consideration of a mo- of a motion.
I will move to approve ordinance number seven seven five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Crescent City, amending chapter five point one hundred of the Crescent City Municipal Code relating to assessment amounts.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Board member Gastonow?
No.
Excuse me, council member Shalong?
Yes.
And, uh, mayor Pro Tim Holly?
Yes.
And mayor Ania.
Yes. Motion passes three to one, thank you, new business, we have none, city council items, legislative matters, Mr. Plazza?
Uh, this time I have no legislative items to discuss with the council at the next meeting, uh, I believe we're gonna bring back, um, if you get the bill number for the council to discuss.
Okay, thank you. City manager reports, do you have anything that you want to do?
Just, you know, thank the council for our budget workshop meeting, uh, we're targeting to get the budget to the council, uh, probably Thursday of this week, uh, so you can start reviewing that half, uh, week and a half, to, to take a look at that before the July first meeting.
All right, thank you. Reports concerned referrals, council travel, let's see, we'll start with Mr. Gastonow.
Well, as Mr. Plazza suggested, or actually said, that we had a very good budget workshop, my very first one, so, uh, last Monday, it was only four and a half hours, so, but learned a lot, and, uh, definitely saw the state of the city and where we're at, and there's a lot of hard decisions coming up, uh, for all of us here on the council. Also, uh, last Wednesday, attended the solid waste management alternatives informal meeting for all parties involved, which included, uh, the city, county, ecology, W S G, Hambro, and of course, Solid Waste Management Authority, uh, had lots of good discussion, a lot of information came out, but, uh, no consensus was made, uh, or alternatives were really suggested, um, and then went to, had the visitors bureau meeting right after that, and there was a really great report about, uh, the French, um, promoters that came into the, uh, city, and luckily, we shanghaied them for a while, and they had an excellent time, they're very interested in our history, and we convinced them to go up one ninety-nine, which they appreciated, uh, Shasta County definitely wanted them to go over two ninety-nine, which would totally take us out of the picture, but, uh, they had a great time, and, uh, they definitely are, actually even talked about booking, uh, not events, but tours, while they're on the tour of Crescent City, so, that's pretty much all I have to report.
Council member Shalong?
Um, so I just wanted to give everybody a reminder about the Fourth of July, and if you haven't signed up for the parade, um, you need to do so, also, duck party raffle items can be taken to Lee, Lee Sam account's office, um, at State Farm, and.
I said, takes care of that, thanks.
They steal your thunder?
No, it's you, good, you're the committee man.
Um, I attended the, uh, arrival of the, uh, boat from Japan, uh, that arrived at the, uh, chamber office, and it was very cool to see the kids from the high school get really involved, and it was fun to, um, learn that they're gonna try to raise funds to actually travel with the boat to return it to Japan, so, I thought that was pretty cool, and, uh, let's see, had a very long budget workshop, and, um, if the public is interested in, uh, what we accomplished, um, I would suggest that you get a copy of the, the budget that we're gonna get a copy of in, on Thursday, um, I think that's about it, thanks.
Thanks. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, I'll be very brief, uh, the budget workshop, of course, I, I attended that, and that's always interesting, and, and it's interesting also to see.